Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting order at this time. So please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate. Mr. Bob McDaniel?
I'm ready.
It's Rick? Did someone say it was Rick last time?
No, he's ready.
He's ready? Okay, Bob says it's your turn. Rick, will you please lead us on fair play, sir?
As elected officials of this city, Lord, we are asked to serve with integrity and dignity. Lord, we just would ask that you would lead us and guide us and give us patience, knowledge, wisdom, and courage to make decisions on issues that face this city. Lord, just help us to know the right path to take that will be the best thing for the city and for the citizens that live in the city. Lord, we ask that for peace and calm in the city, that it might be a place where people would come and want to live. I pray this is your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full room and a good prayer. That's awesome. Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of August 19th and August 23rd, 2018 meeting, please. Everybody had time for review.
I have to repeat again?
Again? Must be in the system, that one.
And then later on, I saw it where there was a $35,000 mention, but it was in an O instead of a zero and a small little dot made its stand out.
That's on the 19th?
Uh, that's what I was looking for. I didn't make a note where it was. The only thing I saw is the 19th.
It is on the 23rd down at the bottom. And then budget is spelled from the beginning of the council, the beginning of the budget.
Backing up to the second page, about three quarters way down, it says, "Consider approval of building permits." And it's supposed to be commissioner, it's supposed to be a name there. It just said, "Cullen made motion to approve." So it should be a name there, which commissioner made the motion.
Okay.
Something else? Is that it?
Motion approved.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
With approval or with modifications. All right, any citizens who desire to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the Open Meeting Act, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Everybody jumping a bunch of usually? Nobody has anything? All right. Thank you. City Council may consider, discuss, and authorize approval of the contract possession picket for consultant fee for health insurance services.
We have a, we've gone out to bid for our health insurance and we found some better rates. Actually, the company we had before, TML, is gonna be, actually gave us better rates because we went out to bid and we found some competitors and they were forced to give us different plans that we can choose from and better rates for, the way they break it down, they have the employee and the employee and children, employee and spouse, and then employee and family. So we were, we had better rates across the board. It's immensely difficult to cycle through all these insurance plans without a consultant. And the one that presented the best plan for us was the asset picket. So we're gonna go through them for our health insurance.
You have any questions? Motion to accept possession picket for the consultant fee for health insurance services.
I made that motion.
Second? All favors say aye. Thank you. City Council may consider, discuss, and authorize action to approve nominations for the Board of Directors for the Roals County Appraisal District. Should be the same that we had in our previous school, don't we?
Yes. As we know, the appraisal district, they set the value of property in Roals County. Each entity that is represented at the appraisal district gets to vote on the board member. For Ballinger, the board member will represent the city of Ballinger, Roals County, and Ballinger ISD. Currently, it's Alvin Dunn. Mr. Kemp is also presently on the board, Mr. Sylvester Swettner, Roy Brown, and Joe Gerhardt. And it's broke up in different ways. For instance, Joe Gerhardt, I think he represents the city of Winters. Sylvester Swettner represents Miles and Miles ISD. We get to vote and our vote is actually, if we split it, you know, what we'll do is you write your, the name of an individual or you can have five or however many you want in there. And then that will go to Mr. Randolph Scott, Paul Randolph, Paul Scott Randolph, the Roals County Appraiser. And then they tabulate all the votes from each entity.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? We're supposed to name people at this point or going through the process?
Yes.
Okay. I did talk to Cheryl Clayton, she's interested in being nominated.
Okay.
I don't have her address, I didn't mess up and knock her address.
How would we?
I did talk to her, she was interested in being nominated. Talked to a few other folks, they didn't want me involved. It can be, imagine, that's kind of stressful.
Yeah, yeah.
But Cheryl was sitting council member. According to Paul's letter, it could be.
Yeah.
These one on my, Carl Williams would be a good one. Bill Hancock, Jeff Smith, Cheryl Clayton.
I would can only have five.
What do you got?
Jason would probably recuse himself.
Cheryl, Cheryl Clayton, Jason Moore, Carl Williams, Bill Hancock, Jeff Smith, Sonberg.
That's six?
Yeah.
You can drop me off and leave those five?
Bill Hancock would be worthy.
Yeah, I agree with Bill.
That gives us five.
I like that, feel like that.
Cheryl Clayton, Carl Williams, Bill Hancock, Jeff Smith, Rick Sonberg.
All right, motion to approve nomination to the Board of Directors for Roals County Appraisal District.
Make the motion?
Second?
Second.
All favors aye. All right, city council may consider, discuss, and authorize action to approve the report from Gaila Fullerton on the 2018, does it appear question, correct?
Everybody should have a copy of the audit report that I need.
Can I look at, there's two stapled copies in one bound copy?
The one bound. On page three, it's the government-wide financial statements. It says that the city has assets of $8,573,606 for its net position. Of that, $8,383,979 or 97% is invested in capital assets, buildings, things like that, infrastructure. I'm not gonna read the rest of those bullet points. I think the gist of it is gonna be on page seven. If you look at the, this is the balance sheet, statement of net asset, net position. And if you look at the total government business type over here at the very bottom, net positions, there's the $8,383,979,000. You have debt obligation, that is your one-year debt obligation, the $611,000. So that's restricted for debt. And that gives you unrestricted of a negative $421,626, which basically means you don't have enough money to pay your debt right now. Or end of 2018, September 2018, I was like.
This is supposed to be your life?
Yes.
It is.
Right down there again, kind of old news.
It is after the fact. Any questions? You wanna know the expenditures on each department? That is actually on page eight, is our next page, that will break down each department, what they spent. It's not very detailed, it just takes a little expenditure. There's more detail on further details exactly what the expenses were for each department. Page 13. And page 11, tells us. Any questions?
That's the whole report?
Isn't the whole report, I'll read the whole thing for you.
No, 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 I just, on page 29, I have a question.
Okay. Yeah, I know.
I guess I'm confused, it's, it talks about actual results and budgeted.
Yes, the difference.
And then it's talking about the difference.
The difference.
I'm surprised I had it together.
The difference column is incorrect. That should be a difference and not added together.
Okay, that was not correct.
So, but honestly, the budget to actual, the budget was kept pretty close within what was budgeted. If you look at the change in net asset, the third row from the bottom, $602,391 to $590,000, which was budgeted, bottom line budgeted, so it was over, you overspent $12,000. Yes. And I'll get you a directed following that budget to actual. When we tested internal controls, there was, there's issues with internal controls and there typically is for any small city of this size or smaller because there's just not that many employees to oversee things, to do separation of duties. So that's a problem and the more suppression duty that you have, the better. But when we tested the internal controls to see if there was any deficiency or finding in that, we found no issue that anything was put improperly. All of the internal controls were not real strong. There was nothing that was put wrong.
Any other questions? I'll come mesmerized with the numbers.
I know this is why everybody came out tonight.
Could you just state what time period this is from so that everybody's clear on that?
This is October 1st, 2017 until September 30th, 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you. It starts from now. So it's kind of old.
Any other questions? Everybody good? All right, motion to accept and authorize the action to approve the report from Gaila Fullerton for 2018, does it appear question?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All favors say aye. All right, city council may consider, discuss, and authorize action to approve a reduction enforced furlough and salary reduction policy. Pat, is this something that you have?
Well, basically what this is, it may come to pass this coming year. Our budget is gonna be a little tighter. We had, we haven't made the revenue that was budgeted from last year. We're about, seems to be, we'll be lucky if we're three to $400,000 short. So what we're going to do is, we wanna put this policy in place so we can have a reduction enforced furlough or salary reduction policy.
Well, we didn't follow charter in the first place as far as coming to council to increase the workforce, so now we're coming to council to decrease the workforce. So I have a problem with that.
We'll get to discuss following charter or not.
So, well, we've discussed it on and off. It's something that just continues to get ignored.
Yeah, that does.
Anyway, so this is what this, this policy's for. Did you have anything to add?
No, it's just, it's basically a plan that allow us to reduce the force, not for cause but just for non-cause in LA. Basically, it's a plan, city administrator, Tommy, whoever else, department is, we'll sit down and figure out what the proposed plan is and bring it to council for approval. That's basically to help alleviate into kind of lawsuits for wrongful termination, it's kind of just a policy and plan to where allow us to reduce the force if need be.
Did anybody have any questions? Pat, could you repeat that and speak up a little?
Repeat what part of? It is a reduction enforced policy. Essentially, the policy will allow the city to reduce its workforce if need be. It's done in a non-cause, in other words, it's not for cause. And so basically, it is a plan that if adopted by the city council would allow the city administration to work together to come up with a plan, to present to council for reduction in workforce if need be. That's basically what.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sir? Can anyone ask a question, please? You raise your hand when I call on you.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering why you would build this route, knowing that once you put that in place, people hired on would know that whether they did their job or not, they still wouldn't always have a job.
Yeah, but.
That's gonna hurt your, the pool where you're coming from, you're gonna start hitting all the job hoppers because nobody that's gonna have a long-term goal is gonna stick with someplace that you don't know has your back. Budgets gets a little mixed up and all of a sudden you're out the door. So that's my only concern is when you start letting people go without cause, then you're gonna start losing what skilled workers that are young.
I understand that and there's no guarantee that we'll have anything. It's just, you know, we wanna have something in place. Any business that makes money, and we do, through our water, through sales tax, through property tax, okay? You wanna be able to adjust your workforce to your revenue slash your budget. And that's all we're doing here.
Well, those people don't get ready to rip a carpet unless they're gonna pull it out of wood or somebody. So that's all I'm gonna say.
I understand.
I think this is standard procedure when you're running a deficit budget or when you're short on money and have an employee workforce. I know it's been done in the schools as well. And also, it protects the employee or employer, I mean, for legalities. It also helps the employee because if they are ripped instead of fired, they can pick up employment benefits.
Right. Well, Oldfield does it all the time. They stack rigs and they start up rigs all the time.
My company does it all the time. What we're doing at Major Company, they act out of the air force.
Yeah, well, I mean, most companies do this. I mean, this is not a foreign concept.
It sucks, I mean, it's not, it's not the greatest kind of, but it is what it is.
Mr. Chad?
I'm just curious, why is this even needed if Texas is a right-to-work state anyway? Anybody can be hired or fired on a whim without cause in the state of Texas.
Yeah, Ed World State, that's what.
It is, but in talking to Pat, we thought this might be the best way to lay a policy and that way everybody knows where we're at, where, you know, that we have something in place.
It's a protection.
It is.
What I'm saying is it's not even needed to do what you're, might have to do anyway.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Ian?
My question is about furlough and salary reduction. If you set a furlough, like you're allowed 80 hours a year for vacation or 80 hours a year for sick pay or whatever, where are we gonna reduce the furlough? Are we gonna just go ahead and take this away from people who've been working and have been building up their time and salary reduction today? You gonna come in and fire everybody and then hire them back at a cheaper price or tell them, "I'm sorry, we just gotta cut your pay"? I mean, just, I just wanna know how it's gonna.
That's not really how the program works.
So it was just a clarification.
Furlough is a forced unpaid vacation, basically, yes. I've been furloughed many times in my government work.
Okay.
They say you need to take two weeks off, you have this time frame to do so.
And they don't, they don't.
And that's, and that's how it works.
It's not designed to fire them and bring them back at a different rate. It would be over a certain period of time, which I said a company would, you know, they think that they're gonna, you know, they need a lower, set a lower wage, but it's only for a certain time and they, they would go back up after whatever.
Oh, so it's just to get through the hump?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Give a hump for it.
Yeah, all right.
Or you might as well dip, if you wanna put it.
Yeah, but there's some employees, you know, that work and some just wait and promise, don't do a double thing.
Okay, hold on, hold on. There's a lot of people here. If I don't call on you, please don't talk out of line, it gets out of control. And if I have to ask you to leave, you'll have to leave, okay? So one at a time, raise your hand, I will call on you. I'm not gonna disregard anybody, all right? All right. Mr. Joe, would you like to finish your comments, sir?
No, go over here.
Okay. Mr. Chad?
This may be something y'all are coming back to later, but I was also wondering if you could just clarify so that everybody understands. In your initial statement, you were talking about that there's a shortage in revenue. Can you clarify that if it's not gonna be talked about later in the meeting as to why?
Well, we had a very wet year this year and they predicted, or in our budget, we from previous sales, we anticipated $1,600,000 in water revenue this year. We've barely broken a million. We're hoping to get a million too by the end of the year.
This month.
Which, yeah, which leaves us, and I'm talking fiscal year, not calendar year. Our fiscal year ends September 30th.
And the 1.6 wasn't just a lofty number, that was pretty normal as from previous years.
For the previous year. But we had a very wet year this year. And all the tanks and rivers and streams are full, so, you know, we don't have the same water customers that we had.
Blessing and a curse, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and this is a 15-year cycle that we've been in, right? Whether this year was a fluke or whether it was, you know, something that we're gonna maintain, you know, if this is gonna happen again or occur again next year and then the year after, we need to really start adjusting, you know, our budget.
Might be worth stating that even with the shortfall, we still have to take or pay to move the due at the same rate every month regardless of what we use.
Regime, yes.
So we have a big expense, our less income, so it's a big.
Yes, ma'am.
Cut the files. The council members that voted for the drug dog, why you would wanna spend $30,000, $40,000 on Fido when people not lose their jobs? We haven't voted.
It's not final and it's not gonna be that expensive.
It's still being discussed. Okay, we wanted the numbers at least.
But it wouldn't be that.
Yes, sir.
I've come to labor force, this is the first thing you hit, cut a job, cut the other one?
No, we're looking at other cuts elsewhere. We're just gonna have this in place in case we have to use it. And it's not gonna be the first thing we look at.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just encourage you, when you do vote, that people's livelihood is at stake. I would choose a human over a dog, I'm sorry.
Absolutely with you. There's a lot in the budget that might've got put in the budget when we didn't know all the numbers and they shouldn't be in there now.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be adjusted. Has to be adjusted because the fund are depleted in areas. Anyone else? What was that? Any other questions?
Well, I need to hear from the rest of the council because I'm not for this policy. Basically, because we did go through the procedure of increasing the staff as we did and increasing the payroll and increasing the funds that were burned, so I have a hard time putting the cart ahead of the horse. My bad, I said it wrong, sorry.
No, this is just a policy.
Yeah, I know. We follow the policies we want to, but we don't adhere to the others that we have in place, so that's the issue too.
Again, I don't think we should be calling anybody on charter following.
Well, I would make a motion that we table this issue until we have time to discuss it further and get more information, everybody be aware of what is actually at stake.
Okay. Motion to table?
Please.
No matter?
You made the motion.
No, motion to table, second?
Need a second.
Second? Nobody wants a second?
Something like that, for like a second.
Something like that, for like a second.
So that's what I asked you of. Are you for it or against it?
I don't think we have a choice right now. Just a budget is stoked in.
Yep.
If it has to be used, then, you know, it has to be done. Hopefully it won't, but. It's a real.
Same? All right. Motion to authorize the action to approve reduction force, furlough, and salary reduction policy.
Thank you, Mr.
Second?
Second.
All favors aye. I'm opposed. All right, consider approval of building permits.
Okay, Mark Porter, that 309, 132, wants to get a 10 by 18 foot back porch. And Kevin Watson, 400 Avenue A, wants to put in a five or four-foot long metal carpet. And I have one, National Blackwell is requesting a waiver to install a propane tank at 2101 Broadway, which is also requesting a waiver to install a septic tank, same location. The gas company has gave their deal of $25,000 to run their gas line. And the city would have to run, build a sewer line plus the upstation to accommodate.
Class other states?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, wait.
What was that, the one that was serious? I don't remember.
She said the same thing.
Oh, 'cause she's...
It's a pretty...
It's a story.
I was wondering, are they not running high?
School sewer line, she's got 300 over.
One of their cousins across the street.
Yeah, but it's, she's, she's downhill, a little body, and, uh, you know, it's gonna be, if we put in one lift station for, for house...
What are the opportunities that other houses are gonna be built along that line in the future where you weren't looking at?
Not at this point. I know we don't have a budget, but like, yeah, later on, we could go back and...
The gas line.
Drop a screw in, later on, we could add it, but...
The gas line is east of Tonda Avenue. Folks, you would have to give permission to do it.
Oh, I appreciate that.
That would be special, just for her house. Big part.
She'd have to have a lift station in August for, uh...
Yes.
And the cost of that?
Oh, I don't know. And the houses across the highway?
Yeah, they're on S. or C.
Big part. So, the houses across the highway are on City S. No.
Yeah, yeah, my, my apartment was over there and they're on S.
Are they on S?
Or is it another? For life's sake, I said yes.
They are.
Would it be called, presented to, to board and go across it?
'Cause all...
Text up the climb going underneath the highway.
Do it.
Text up the climb going underneath the highway.
That's fine. That's, that answers the question.
These are all, would it be nice things to come out, but you better put them for me, too, so...
You have a question?
No, except for the U-ten tank itself. Who's gonna supply that? What kind of tank is it? Does it... Probably a two-figure from what it has to gas. Okay, is it, uh, have welded ends on it, or is it a... I don't know what, I don't know what...
Come to a brand new.
Okay, I'm asking this from experience.
It's gonna be a barbecue table.
But, and, and in the direction that this U-ten tank would be placed, it would be great. I, I don't have any idea what kind of brand it is.
The gas company is gonna put it in. All it knows on those rules and has to follow those rules. Even have them here in town, where they have to send them on a certain distance from the alley, from the house, neighbors.
Let me explain why I'm asking these questions. Being in the gas industry all my life, 30 years, I've seen things happen. And some of these U-ten tanks go wrong. If the end, if it's a welded end and that end comes off, that end cap's gonna be right here, but that tank's gonna be four, five, six blocks down the way and it's gonna take everything in the way of that. So, it's... You're gonna, you're gonna have to get the engineer and ask back, "What's tax again"? That's all I care, because I don't, I would not want it facing toward the school or her house. That's up to them.
Does it have any regulation regarding this?
Yes.
I guess we have an ordinance against propane tanks or something while they're asking.
As long as service in the right...
Service not available, so...
And we have some in town that have service available, but they don't want it.
Right, right.
So, they have the variants of what...
Probably, what, and we'll just check and see how that, that's gonna be turned, and...
Well, true, yes, 'cause it's a good, I understand, but I wanted everybody to be aware of my concern of how this thing would be placed, because accidents happen.
We know Nancy's an engineer, so... I bet Nancy can take care of it. She isn't a engineer.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you place the electric on this house for enough time?
Yeah. No, I mean, we're, we're just gonna check. I mean, the, there's no, it won't stop anything. We'll just check and see what they're gonna do.
Well, and really, she doesn't have near as many people around her as some of the others in town that do have a propane tank.
I was thinking more of the time you brought your voice.
Correct. I understand.
So, make mostly approval building permits, submit Nancy Blackwell's request.
Second?
Second, sir.
The variance request?
Yes.
Your, your...
I'm for it, yes. She needs to go house, just...
Yeah, I agree with it. I'm sure you should.
No, you go ahead, Bob. Bob second.
I say.
All voters, yeah. All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Steve. All right, here's the monthly please. Actuary report from Chief Stan Marish.
All right, for the month, obviously, we've had a total of 16 arrests, thirty seven reports, five accidents, and 380 calls for the month. Uh, because of the fund D and D system, we quite don't know how to run the month of the report yet, so, um, and the judge has been out sick. Um, but we drove clear approximately 94 citations. That includes code enforcement. We couldn't break it down, so, and we don't know about the court run. Yeah, so, I don't know that about it.
That's a new transition, we'll try and get, we'll have more info.
Yep. So, with the judge being out sick and everything, it's, it's a little bit of a...
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way that you can provide to the council a breakdown of, um, all of the calls that are, all the stops that are made, um, you know, per officer, per shift, or anything like that?
I can, I can do traffic violation versus non-traffic violation.
Or dispatch, brick, or whatever?
Contact may, or no, is everything going for?
I mean, contact may, we had over 94. I mean, that's just citations. That's not, that's not including warnings or anything like that.
I want per officer.
So, per officer?
Yeah, that's the way I'm wanting it from them.
I mean, if you want to, but I'm, I'm zero. I guess I'm, in fact, I had to. I had to, I worked in that, so I had to.
I'd like to get, at the next one, I'd like to see that.
All right.
So, if you have a lot of cases, just go to the DA.
Do what?
You have cases, go to the DA.
Yes, every week.
Uh, could you give me a percentage on a yearly basis, maybe last year, how many of those were dismissed?
15%?
50% dismissed, and why? Could you give me a basic reason?
No, trying to think. A lot, I mean, a lot of it is, of the DA, of the DA discretion, whether that was a sense.
The DA's discretion?
Yes.
So, you would present hard evidence for whatever you guys are doing during any of that, that will...
That is whether or not he wants to take it or not. And a lot of times, it's, um, pre-trial order, I think. So, you do this before court, you know, we give you a pre-trial of this conversion, technically, that's a dismissal. So...
So, the 50% is forget a percentage, is it?
That is.
That's your senior, across all the forms?
Yeah. Here, I'll sound you this.
Interesting. Anybody else?
Me neither.
Yes, sir.
All right, here's the city administrator's bi-weekly report, please.
Ah, we got a budget hearing coming up. Uh, who mess one? Do you want it?
Who mess one, who messes?
Yeah, actually, that was the 12. That was a typo. Uh, our first one is actually coming up September the 9th. There'll be a budget hearing. Uh, and this is more for the, uh, we'll talk about the tax rate, the proposed tax rate to cover the budget. Uh, we'll have this on September 9th. We'll have another one on the September the 12th. Uh, we'll have one on the September the 16th, and then we will vote on September the 20th. Uh, that's when we will, uh...
Budget approval?
Yes, budget approval and vote on the tax rate.
So, are all these dates wrong to you?
The first one is? Just the first one. It wasn't actually September 2. It's supposed to be September 12, 12, 12 September. Uh, then we'll have another one on, well, it starts on the 9th, then 12, then 16, then 20.
That's that bill?
What time is this on? Uh, the one on the 9th?
They're all at 5:30.
They're all, yeah, they're open. I'm just making sure.
And they do something to the public?
Yes, they are open to public.
Thank you.
They're public here, so, that's, that's who, it's for you guys.
Thank you, Tom.
And they are all at 5:30. Uh, then we have a update on street sign installation, which is one of Christmas Pet Projects. Uh, we, they, they worked, and I'm not sure exactly what street, Steve, do you?
I'm not sure, yeah, there's some of them down, uh...
Still in...
Down that area, and then, uh, Friday, they put a, a lot of new, uh, stop and yield sign.
Great.
Right, so, we are still...
Replaced a bunch that didn't really replace.
So, we are still working on that project.
Great, thank you.
I still have a couple signs that I've recovered. I just couldn't get them out here.
Yeah, and I got one as well, down here.
Same?
We can tell you, we replaced all signs down in the flats, all street signs. The yield signs that were old, corroded, you couldn't see, they've all been recovered or replaced. And we spent three days driving up and down the street. So, the city replaced the stop signs and yield signs wherever they were missing or damaged. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much needed.
And, uh, since we have been working on the budget, uh, that was kind of the end of mine of the city administrator's bi-weekly report, so, uh, it's mostly budget. We were working on the budget, trying to get it together, so...
What's the progress at the water treatment plant on the repair of the pipe?
Uh, our guys were, uh, working to get the, uh, the, the SCADA system. Uh, yeah, trying to get, get, get to the, to the pipe. Uh, what happened after Carlos passed away, uh, and we had a lot of rain that filled the hole. We had a, it was a, a spring, and we just had natural water flowing in there. Uh, we got the water out, we got down to the pipe, uh, and my water guys had been finishing up some loose ends on some other places. Uh, we gotta get back out there, uh, get the SCADA system put back onto the valve, and then it'll be ready to cover up.
Back that we were putting in a manhole?
We were, but we haven't seen the manhole, and it's been so long, we're just gonna go ahead and cover it up.
Save a lot of money, right?
It will, yeah.
What are you discussing?
Except for that, it was a special order, it was a special sign. We ordered from a company in San Antonio, and, you know, I don't want it second.
What we'll do is talk to them and see what we're, kinda, what we can do.
So, it's finished and sitting and waiting, special order, and we can pick it up?
Well, it hasn't been delivered.
They were going to deliver it, that.
Okay.
And that's completely...
Okay. Where'd the track go?
We still want it.
So, are we leasing it?
Yes. Yeah, we use it. Right now, we're, we're digging holes out of the, uh, uh, sewer treatment plant. That's where we put our, our houses that we tear down, and we got some that were just waiting on the hole to get complete. Uh, TCEQ, uh, I know they're coming out. Is it this week or next Thursday? And, uh, but we're trying to finish our hole out there, so, that's where we're using it.
What is lease on that, Tom?
There is a lease on them.
What is lease?
What is the lease?
$2,500 a month.
What is the purchase price for one of those? $150,000?
Yeah, right about that.
So, are we still leasing the safety boxes in the high-volume pump that's sitting out there?
Yes, we are.
And that's $7,500 a month?
I do not know. I would have to look and see.
I think it's $5,000.
$5,000? For both the boxes and the pump?
Yes.
$5,000 a month?
No, it's 5,500 plus the 25.
Okay, but the 5,500 is the safety box and the pump, and then the 25 is the checkup. Anything else? Nope. All right. He requests a future agenda out of the city council, please. Anything needs to be on the agenda. And as usual, everybody jumps at once. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Those of you that are not a city employee, it's long into executive session at this time, so you will have to depart. We appreciate everybody's support and comments tonight, but this time, we're going into a little session so everybody can depart that's not with the city or employed to the city. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.